Welcome. I am Andrea Hobley, President of the League of Women Voters Woodbury Cottage Grove Area. For more than 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been a trusted source of nonpartisan information for voters and a longstanding witness to Minnesota's proud tradition of voter access and election integrity. The mission of the League, national, state, and local, is to empower voters and defend democracy. The League works to encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government. We envision a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League strengthens our communities by conducting candidate forums for voters to learn about who's on their ballot, promoting voter registration, and sharing voter information, working to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influencing public policy through education and advocacy. We invite you to visit our state League's website, L W V M N dot org, to learn about the statutes, best practices, and safeguards associated with Minnesota elections. Follow the link to Vote 411 for a one-stop shop for all your election needs personalized to you, including a voter's guide. We hope all of our candidates here tonight have submitted their information to the voter's guide. And now I'll turn it over to Liz Nordling, who is moderating today.
Hello and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Independent School District 833 School Board. I'm Liz Nordling, a member of the League of Women Voters, and I do not live in District 833. I'm a League-trained moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not of the laws of the League of Women Voters. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on your ballot on November 4th. All nine candidates who filed to run for this school board were invited to participate, and today we have six of the candidates participating. They are Chad Borseth, Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg, Juan Huerta, Lori Pachia Mikelski, I'm sorry if I messed that up Lori, Katie Schwartz, and Sharon Van Leer. Three more candidates were not able to participate. They are Travis Dolly, Bryn Forsner, and Louise Hines. Our timekeeper will show our warning signs of 30 and 15 seconds and then a stop sign. At that time, you can finish your sentence. To begin, each candidate will introduce themselves by name and make an opening statement of up to one minute. For the opening statement, candidates will respond in alphabetical order. Thereafter, the order of speaking will be rotated. Candidates will have one minute to respond to each question. Candidates, you do not have to use the full time. You can just say what you have to say and be done. That will allow time for more questions. When questions are finished, candidates will have one minute for their closing statement, and that will be in reverse alphabetical order. Questions were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League members. We will not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature. We may consolidate questions that fall in the same general topic area. All questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. Viewers can send in questions during the live broadcast by calling or texting the phone number that will be displayed on the screen during the broadcast. This forum is being recorded and being livestreamed on the Government Channel, Comcast HD 859, and on True Lens YouTube channel. The complete unedited recording will be posted on our League's website and on True Lens YouTube channel, and will be replayed on the local cable government channel. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of this forum may not be used for partisan or political purposes. We will start with opening statements, and I will begin by reading the submitted opening statements of two of the candidates. The first statement is from Travis Dolly. My name is Travis Ellen Dolly, and I'm running for Independent School District 833 School Board because I believe in strong, community-centered, public schools. As both a parent and a professional with a background in finance and accountability, I know how important it is to make responsible decisions that serve all students. My priorities are ensuring academic excellence, supporting our teachers, and being a good steward of taxpayer resources. I want every child in our district, no matter their background, to have the opportunity to succeed. I'm honored to be considered for this role and would be grateful for your support. He said that information on positions and background are available at candidates.com, candidates.goodparty.org/travissdolly. Next, I'll read a statement from Louise Hines. I've been a part of the South Washington community for more than 40 years. My husband and I raised two children who attended our schools from kindergarten through high school. For 22 years, I was part of our district's incredible teaching staff and continued as a substitute teacher after retirement. As a teacher, I was an advocate for students, a voice for parents, and a partner with teachers and staff. I'm running for school board so I can continue as an advocate for students, a voice for parents, and a partner with teachers and staff. When I am asked what I want for our students, standardized tests and graduation rates are not the only things that cross my mind. I want our students to be prepared to thrive in whatever environment they choose. A focus on high-quality education and our children's physical, social, and emotional well-being will accomplish that goal. High-quality education and student safety have been my priorities for a long time, and that will not change. It is the job of the school board to set policy, but it is good business to understand how that policy affects students, staff, and parents on a logistical level. I can do that. More information can be found at the following website, and it's basically hintsforschoolboard.org. We'll now go with the opening statements from our candidates who are here tonight, and we will start with Chad Borseth.
Hello, my name is Chad, and I'm running for school board because I care very much for the best interests of our children. I believe we can do more to support their needs. My wife and I are very fortunate to have our children thriving in our district's schools, and I want to ensure that the rest of our community feels that same way. If elected, I'd be the only classroom teacher on the school board, and this is important because everyday experiences with children matter, everyday collaborations with teacher matter, and everyday conversations with parents matters. Our district deserves leadership that's shaped by these everyday realities of students, families, and teachers. In my previous campaign, I focused on increasing student engagement. With one in four of our district's students chronically absent from school, my focus has not changed. We must move with a sense of urgency to address this problem because true equity starts and ends in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next with her opening statement is Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, Telecommunication Service, and viewers for tuning in. I'm Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg, and I'm running for school board because I see public education as a force for good in our community. I want to prioritize the success of all the students in our district, both their academic, social, and emotional success. I want to ensure that schools are a place of belonging for all. I value teachers and hope to improve their working conditions and retain the experienced teachers with deep expertise in the district. I'm a former secondary science teacher who was in the district for more than 10 years, most of it at Eastridge High School in the Project Lead the Way biomedical science program. I still work as an educator at the University of Minnesota, and I'm teacher-endorsed. Our family moved to this district for the public schools. We currently have a fourth grader, and I'm ready to put my educational expertise to use as a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement is Juan Huerta.
Hi, my name is Juan Huerta. I'm running for school board because I want to bring back higher education to the students, bring parental rights transparency back to both parents, and have good communication with the teachers, bring security and discipline when needed for disruptive students. I think if we can get all that under control, just like taking cell phones out of the class, example of that, it'd be more, better communication with the students and teachers, and then one-on-one with them. I have six children that currently, five graduate from here in District 833, Eastridge and Park High School, and I currently have one in the middle school. So I want to make sure she's well-educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement is Lori Pachia Mikelski.
Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. I am 72 years young, and I am a retired registered nurse, 45 years. I had many opportunities when my children were in school to volunteer in a program called Junior Grade Books, which was amazing as far as getting the children to understand what forums are all about, speaking, having respect, listening to other people, and magnifying their critical thinking skills, which could be lacking a little bit. I was asked to run, and it didn't take long for me to realize, being retired, that this is where my heart is at, it's with children. Even disciplinary action plans are a big thing because children need to understand what that's all about. So I'm excited to run, and I hope you vote for me, and I want to meet the needs of the parents, empower the parents to be the centerpiece of their child's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next with her opening statement is Katie Schwartz.
Hi, I'm Katie Schwartz, and I am running for reelection to the school board. I was raised in this community, and I'm raising my children here as well. My oldest three kids have all graduated from the district, and my youngest is a sophomore at Park and is also taking online courses. My grandchildren are also students of this district. My daughter even works in the district as a paraprofessional. I have a vested interest in the success of this district. We need to make choices based on evidence rather than ideology so that we can give our children the best possible education. I believe that every student deserves to feel safe, welcomed, and valued in the schools. With over a decade of experience on the board and deep roots in the community, I'm ready to continue fighting for the schools our children deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement, Sharon Van Leer.
Hello, I am Sharon Van Leer, and I have been in the district for over 40 years. I am a grandparent, great-grandparent, and I have been, yes, a foster parent. I have five children, 19 grandchildren, and 22 great-grandchildren. And I want to serve on the board. I'm running to serve on the board because I trust, support, and believe in public education. I want to be an advocate for those who don't have a voice and those who feel they have been marginalized. I think that our district is great, and I want to support all the work and continue working with all of the things that we have implemented so far.
Thank you. Now we'll begin with our first question, and it goes to you first, Sharon Van Leer.
Mm-hmm.
How are you currently active in South Washington schools or the local community? And what specific knowledge do you have related to school administration and finance?
Oh, that's a good point. Okay. I serve on the CARES Board, and we just had the Cottage Grove food truck, and I was there and meant the community. I serve on the Diversity Equity Board, and I sit on the Governor's Judicial Selection Committee for our district. And I have two great-grandchildren in the district, and I support all the fundraising events that they have, and attend as many of the programs and events that we currently support in the district.
Thank you. The question now goes to Lori Pachia Mikelski.
Can you repeat the question, please?
How are you currently active in South Washington schools or the local community? And what specific knowledge do you have related to school administration and finance?
Okay. I am an RN, registered nurse, 45 years, and I have a degree in psychology with criminal justice emphasis. I volunteer at the St. Croix County Jail with women. As far as finance and that kind of thing, I have scrutinized what is happening in our district, and I'm quite aware of things going on in our district that I really would like to help to change if possible. I listen to my grandchildren, and I listen to people very well, and I have heard things that are a little alarming to me about what's going on with their education. So I have chosen to run to listen to the parents. Again, they are the centerpiece of what their children are learning, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. The question now goes to Chad Borseth.
I was an educator at Eastridge for five years. I coached and advised several sports and clubs there. Very important. I have two children that attend Nueva Zoológica School in St. Paul Park, and I'm currently in the process of finalizing my doctoral program in K-12 leadership, which I hope to complete my dissertation later this, and that's about it.
Thank you. The question now goes to Katie Schwartz.
Okay. I have been on the board for 12 years, so I have been on multiple committees throughout the district. When my children were younger, I was active in the PTA's. I have coached sports teams within the district. I have two grandchildren that are currently in the district. I attend their events and other fundraisers and go on field trips when they have those. As far as finances concerned, being on the board, I have learned a lot about the district finance as well as administration, and I do believe that we have done a good job. We have a fund balance currently that is at board policy, and we are pushing to be able to maintain that. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Juan Huerta.
Hi, this is my first time running for school board, so I don't have a lot of experience in this. I do have five kids that graduated in District 833, two from Eastridge, and two from Park High School. Currently have one in Cottage Grove Middle School, so it's very important. I've seen my kids come out of school, what they've learned and what they didn't learn, and if I can help improve the academics, it'd be a big plus for all of our students and children as they graduate and move into real-life skills.
Thank you. The question now goes to Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
Thank you. I'm currently active in the So washco schools, mostly because I have a fourth grader. I also follow along with the Special Education Advisory Committee and volunteer at some schooly events in the summertime. When possible, I volunteer through my child's school. My experience with school administration is mostly related to my current position as a Director of Curriculum at the University of Minnesota Medical School, and have some higher education experience with finance as well as administrative tasks. I was a former classroom teacher here at Eastridge for 10-plus years. I do attend community events. I have been following the school board meetings and attending school board meetings when I can. I do agree with Chair Schwartz that we have a good fund balance, and the current school board is doing a really great job trying to buffer from instability, both federal and state, in the budgets. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question, and it goes to you first, Elizabeth. How would you describe the district's fiscal performance? What areas of financial or budget improvement do you see as a priority for the 2025-2026 school year? Elizabeth?
Yep, thank you. Just was writing it down, make sure I captured that. As far as the district's fiscal performance, as I mentioned in my last response, I think that the district is doing a relatively good job trying to buffer itself and build up a fund balance so that it can be prepared for potential instability ahead. I think that it's doing a really great job trying to sustain programming. We have a lot of different programming in the district that really matters to this community, from, you know, Nueva Zoológica and some of the Spanish immersion things, as well as Project Lead the Way, and IB programming, and AP programming, and it takes a lot of dollars to staff and support students in those areas. We have a lot of students, and a lot of students, 20% of them, receive special education services. So I think the district is doing a really good job trying to pay attention to all the different areas that we need to be fiscally responsible in, and I know that we're trying to make budget cuts as minimally as possible so that these programs can continue for all students.
Thank you. The question now goes to Sharon Van Leer.
As Katie had said, we have a strong fund balance. If we were, our budget currently focuses on programs that we offer. I would look at being transparent with our community. Communication is important, and if anyone watches the school board meetings, our finance person, Chris Blackburn, gives an update on our fiscal policies, and I believe that if, if, uh-oh, I believe that if we continue on this path, that we'll build a stronger financial picture portfolio.
Thank you. The question now goes to Lori Pachia Mikelski.
Okay, fiscal performance. I feel that it would be measured by the results of how the students are doing. There has been enough information that pre-COVID and COVID, that there is a decline in the academic performance of the children. And one of the big things I would want to do is to make sure that parents are very involved with their child's education, and to make sure that their child is getting academic, having academic success for their future, every child, irregardless of ethnic background. So, yeah, that's what I would do.
Thank you. Question now goes to Chad Borseth.
Can you repeat the question, please?
How would you describe the district's fiscal performance? What areas of financial or budget improvement do you see as a priority in the 25-26 school year?
Okay, in my long career in the private sector and manufacturing, one thing that we did is we had specific goals for all schools and all factions of our facilities in terms of cost savings. I think one thing I like to do is see the, or push forward, see the schools have cost containment measures at the school level. One of my first experiences walking into a public school was realizing that there's not a lot of people watching the bottom line, you know, whether, you know, there's a considerable amount of waste. So I'd want to make sure that we can address that. Number two, you know, we have a lot of folks that are indirectly related to educating our children that have active teaching license. I would like to see them participating and being more involved in our schools so that when they go back to their jobs at the district center here, that they have a broader perspective of what's occurring in the schools. And then I think that's, and I think it's important to say that the fund balance is important, but if we can lessen the bonds and levies, you know, at that, because that's attributing something, excuse me.
Thank you. Question now goes to Katie Schwartz.
Can you repeat the question?
How would you describe the district's fiscal performance? What areas of financial or budget improvement do you see as a priority for the 25-26 school year?
Okay. I feel like the budget is always something that will need to be watched. We generally, as a school district, we can't just create more kids. The kids have to come in, and so we need to be mindful of that budget. We have a cross-subsidy for our special education, and the uncertainty of our federal funding as we, funds were held this year, and so we need to be prepared to cover any expenses that come up if we would lose any kind of funding. So we need to make sure we are prioritizing classroom instruction above all else. We can examine administrative costs. We can renegotiate vendor contracts, seek operational efficiencies. We need to engage our community in transparent conversations so that we ensure we maintain educational quality, and every decision would focus on student outcomes first.
Thank you. Question now goes to Juan Huerta.
Hi, thank you. I understand we have a strong funding with the District 833. I think we gotta take a closer look and see where that funding is actually going. I've talked to several parrot teachers, and some are overwhelmed with that, those classrooms. There's areas around here that have, their parrots are actually out on a busy street, and they need fencing around just to keep them from going in the street, and that's some funding we can move towards there, and just improve in making sure everything goes to the classroom and helping teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question goes to you first, Juan. Each time a tragic school shooting occurs in our communities, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. What actions would you support be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools?
Thank you. I'm a former police officer for the city of Leavenworth, Kansas, and I do take security very important. I do security right now for my current employer, State Security. I think I would work with the school board, come up with security measures. I was already thinking already before I even got into this classroom here. The doors here should have locks on the bottom and top where they can be activated by the teacher instead of putting desks and stuff in front of the door to keep the shooter out. Everybody coming into the school should have an appointment or a time that they're gonna pick up their child, and the student, or a teacher should walk the student to the front door, verify before the person's up at the door, "Hey, is that your parent?" "Yes." If not, also trying to get better protection at front doors, where you can have bulletproof maybe because it'll still buy you a few minutes for the police to get there before the individual gets into the school. So I take security very seriously.
Thank you. The question now goes to Lori.
Okay. This is obviously one of the biggest concerns of every parent, and I feel that having the best parent-teacher collaboration, so there's enough awareness of teachers and of the school, what's going on. Locking doors is obviously the number-one priority. A lockdown plan that is practiced is huge. It should be practiced all the time, and for children not to fear, but to feel safe, that they feel safe in that classroom. So academic is great. I mean, academics has to be first, but safety in the environment is huge. So I would say that's where a lot of the money should go in safety, lockdown, and procedures to be followed on a regular basis for the children so they feel comfortable with it.
Thank you. The question now goes to Sharon Van Leer.
Thank you. We already have safety measures in place. The new renovations and that part of the bond or the levy was passed helped us to be able to do these things. But I think one of the important things that we're missing is support and focus on wellness and mental health. Those resources should be linked, and awareness should be taught, health and education for social service programs, and promoting student well-being. I believe that if we start with those measures, it will help us with some of the safety issues because we can identify prior to anything occurring from happening. But we do have a policy and a procedure that is, that implemented and the administrators are aware of and follow.
The question now goes to Elizabeth.
Do you mind repeating the question one more time?
Each time a tragic school shooting occurs in our communities, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. What actions would you support to be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools?
Thank you. I would say, you know, keeping in mind that the school board can only govern policy and not actually, you know, build out programs and planning. Obviously, this is a very serious issue. I send my fourth grader to school every day with some trepidation, and unfortunately, active, you know, shooter situations are not the only places where our students feel unsafe. And so I would agree with some of the things stated before that prioritizing our resources to build school communities that are strong, that are trauma-informed, providing staffing support that would be for mental health services and things like that to promote well-being. The district has done things that have tried to prepare our students with physical safety around secure entrances and great SRO relationships, cybersecurity, security cameras. But, you know, gun violence needs to be stopped by talking with families about safe firearm storage and making sure that some of the mental health services really support our students in school, but also at home.
Thank you. The question now goes to Chad.
School security starts with strong relationships between staff and our students. I believe the number is 70% of these shootings, there's been someone that's been aware of these incidents ahead of times. We should invest and provide opportunities for teachers and staff to build relationships with students, whether it's mentoring. Physical upgrades approved, of course, those are great, but we can't stop prioritizing building security. I'm a strong supporter of SROs in school. I believe in strengthening relationships with the local law enforcement agencies. And most importantly, we need to make sure our staff are And most importantly, we need to make sure our staff are properly trained to respond to the emergencies that may come up.
Thank you. The question now goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. If you drive around our district, you will see the bond money hard at work. That is, a big portion of that was to increase security, secure entrances, and change some of the layouts so that we have a better handle on that security. We also need to increase access to counselors, social workers, school psychologists. We can screen for risk factors such as attendance drop, behavior changes, and then we can intervene early. We can partner with our community mental health providers for referrals and onsite services. Also maintain up-to-date emergency operation plans, run tabletop exercises with our staff and first responders annually, secure main entrances, layered approaches, locks, sightlines, lighting, use cameras for safety, and have regular maintenance on our safety features. Mass notification systems for rapid alerts, two-way radios, or other reliable communication for staff, and have an anonymous reporting app for tips.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question and it will go to you first, Katie. What do you think of the district's rollout of the READ Act and literacy curriculum?
I think the READ Act has been a great resource. When they came to the board and showed us the different levels and just how each level you do so much and they do all these touch points and things that, in reality, we've wanted to do but haven't been able to do at this level. The topics that the kids get to learn, they're things that kids want to read about. And that's what I really like, is being able to give kids the opportunity to read about things that they actually want to read about, so they do read. So this READ Act and the ability to move forward with it, with our community's support for our calendar this year, has really been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Sharon Van Leeuwen.
I support the READ Act. The levels of learning, as Katie said, are phenomenal. And I believe with this program, it will help us to close the achievement gap. I believe that if every student can read, they can perform much better. And I love this program for another reason, is that it's student-centered. It is unique, dynamic, and it benefits all of our children.
Thank you. The question now goes to Elizabeth Bachmann Ekberg.
I think the district has done a remarkable job with the READ Act rollout. It was a really challenging initiative and I like that they took the approach that all staff participated because literacy starts in conversations with everyone. I think there was some really great intentional communication in the district about the initiative for parents and other community members. I think it really does focus on students and a more individualized approach to their instruction and really does make some leaps to close the achievement gap, which is, you know, it takes a long time to actually make strides in that area. I also really appreciate how it increases student confidence by letting them choose what to read and allows them to do, feel better about themselves and their performance in school.
Thank you. The question now goes to Juan Huerta.
I think the READ Act is a great resource and everyone here had a great comment on it. The children do like it. They like it. They can pick the books they want to read and stuff. It does improve the gap that we have with children and the ones at our lower reading level. It helps them improve on their academic and reading and writing. So I, I think it's focusing on our children is what really counts. Thank you.
Thank you. The question goes to Lori Mackelsky.
Okay, Petya Mackelsky. Thank you. The READ Act, I don't, I'm not 100% familiar with it, but again, I measure results by test scores in how the children are doing. The proficiency in reading, critical thinking, math, and other subjects are declining. So you look at what is not going right here. I, we had phonics when my children were in school and I would, I volunteered for junior grade books, which was excellent for the children. So I would want to promote more of the things that work to see better results of the children and get them excited about what they're reading, what they're doing. Yeah, and just eliminate some of the anxiety in the classroom would be great, to have kids be excited to learn again, so.
Thank you. Question goes to Chad Borseth.
The READ Act, this is something I'm quite familiar with. I recently went through the training at my, at my school in St. Paul. There's nothing new that the READ Act did. This is 30-year-old technology and curriculum. My concern is why we had to come back to the READ Act when it's been there the whole time. The commitment to phonemic awareness and phonics and such, for some reason it disappeared. So my concern, we're making a significant investment into the READ Act, training all our teachers, is that we implement it. You know, we can talk about our following NAEP scores and, you know, a third of our students are reading at grade level in the state of Minnesota, but the implementation is very important. My, I'm also quite concerned with that it took so long to get this passed, this legislation passed. There are special interests involved in putting this off. Signs of reading, which has been around for decades, is a dangerous word for some of these special interest groups. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question and it goes to Sharon Van Leeuwen first. How do you plan to ensure that all students, regardless of their background, beliefs, or identity, feel safe, represented, and respected? Please give specific examples of policies or initiatives that you would support to achieve this.
I support the need to implement equitable, inclusive, anti-racist, anti-bias education in our school's environment. The racial equity plan, Policy 102.1 mandates that equity is merged into all of our district policies, procedures, and the curriculum. And if, and we can, well, if a student's cultural identity is acknowledged, affirmed, and validated, it provides, and that we provide shared space for their racial identities, we create an environment where they can feel belonged. I believe bringing transparency to the table is very important.
Thank you. The question now goes to Chad Borseth.
First of all, I'd like to correct a mistake that I made in my opening statement when I said equity starts and ends in the classroom. That last part ends was a mistake. Equity is very important. I work in one of Minnesota's most historic schools with some of the most complex learners. The debate around diversity and equity and inclusion has become quite polarized. Some defend the status quo and some want it completely eliminated. And there are some growing that want to see diversity and equity and inclusion reimagined. Equity must be more than a symbolic gesture. We need to have strong data behind it. When one in four of our students doesn't come to school or is chronically absent, I question our programming. Chronic absenteeism is a red flag that we must address. Thank you.
Thank you. The question goes to Juan Huerta.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
How do you plan to ensure that all students, regardless of their background, beliefs, or identity, feel safe, represented, and respected? Please give specific examples of policies or initiatives that you would support to achieve this.
Well, I would go back to like when I was in high school and middle school. I see from a personal point of view, being a minority, I see that DEI is actually affecting a lot of my kids that went through it. They're being pulled out of classrooms to go to English as a second language, which I thought that's unfair, you know, being English their first language at home. That my children being of Hispanic descent have said, "Hey, other students look at us." Like, "Why are you guys even put it to class?" I think it creates race division and if we can just be all, just colorblind, just be normal people, just everyone's one, one race, just be the same, I think that makes everybody feel comfortable. It's just, just be back to normal. Just don't divide anybody. Don't be segregating groups with this group and that group. I think if we just get rid of it and go back to the basics like we did when we were in the eighties, we'd be good.
Thank you. The question now goes to Lori Petya Mackelsky.
Okay, so to ensure all students to feel safe and respected during the day, I think it's very important to have teacher-parent collaboration, working together with each child. Parents are the backbone of what their children are learning. If there are needs that need to be addressed, the parent and the teacher should work together toward the same goal for that student. I don't believe that any child should ever be looked at for color or IQ or anything. All children, and that's why I'm running, because all children deserve a right to the best education and the best success for their future, even if it means a job that maybe doesn't bring in as much money as an engineer. Every child deserves the respect. And I think to have a good disciplinary action plan to promote a child's well-being is everything. If a child is being picked on, it needs to be addressed immediately by that teacher to keep the class going smoothly and for kids to feel safe and respected in the classroom.
Question now goes to Elizabeth Bachmann Ekberg.
Thank you. I think, you know, the first part of this, making sure that all students feel safe and respected. They need to be seen at their schools. They need to feel belonging. And as far as equity, it is a core principle to the current district strategic plan. And so it really is something that should be implemented in all buildings. I think in order for these students to feel represented in their buildings, we, the district needs to continue to work on diverse hiring practices. The state of Minnesota only has about 5% of teachers who identify as non-white. And I would advocate that the district continue to invest in hiring committees that have unconscious bias training, diverse hiring committees, community partnerships, objective screening practices, and then tracking metrics to make sure that we move the needle on this, to make sure that our buildings represent our students. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. I support all the current initiatives, so the equity policy, the equity pledge that was signed as well as the equity part of the strategic plan. I feel that all students need to feel like they belong. I think that we do need to realize that we have many different cultures, many students that speak many different languages, and understanding those cultural differences will help the child be able to learn because of something in their culture. If that classroom teacher doesn't understand that something from their culture is why they might be doing something the way they're doing, then that child could be disciplined for something that is completely normal in their culture. And we have to understand that. We have to understand that all children are coming to us from different backgrounds. We don't know where they're coming from and we need to take the time to learn where they're coming from. And they need to have a trusted adult in their life, in that school that they can go to so that we can help them, as well as, the last question, the school safety.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Chad Borseth first. What strategies will you implement to enhance and expand mental health services to our students in our schools, considering the importance of addressing mental health challenges among our youth?
This starts with addressing our chronic absenteeism. Again, one in four students in our district is chronically absent. This ties into this previous question of diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, as a special ed teacher, I work closely with social workers, so I'm always gonna invest in more social workers. You know, they work tirelessly. The, the, I see one side of things. The social worker sees the classroom and the home life, so supporting social workers would be my number one thing. But again, when our chronic absenteeism in our district is, you know, 25% of our students are more than 10% missing, this should be a warning flag that we need to address. I would be out in front of the buildings with the principals, asking questions. I would be asking parents to ask questions about why their child is out of school, why they're going to the bathroom so frequently. We must address that. When we address chronic absenteeism, we start addressing some of the foundational elements that are affecting children's mental health.
Thank you. The question now goes to Elizabeth Bachmann Ekberg.
Thank you. I know that in the past, the district has spent more money hiring social workers and putting more resources into mental health for students, building community partnerships for earlier detection. They've developed better web resources. And I know that investing in mental health helps reduce stigma. And the earlier the intervention, the better. And so I would propose continuing to invest in social workers, as Chad mentioned, and making sure that they basically come as early as possible. So that may mean investing in more of those resources for the youngest of our students that we have in the district. And that would help promote this early detection, chronic absenteeism, improve academic performance overall, reduce behavioral interruptions, reduce barriers for families to receive services that they need. And then I would also continue to promote a trauma-informed approach for all buildings so that students are supported in ways that they need when they show up to the school building.
Thank you. The question now goes to Juan Huerta.
I think we should, we should support more, put more funding into the social workers for what's going on here and with the news, with the schools around the entire country. To make schools safe here in Cottage Grove, South Washington County, Woodbury, Newport Park, St. Paul Park. We gotta work closely with parents, teachers, and counselors. If you see grades that were doing well, students are doing well in grades and then they start dropping, let's start looking into it. Teachers should communicate with the parents, "Hey, students' grades are dropping. Is there something we can help with? What's going on at home? If you want to talk to the counselor, counselor's here to help you." If, if all parents, teachers, and counselors work together, have transparency on what's going on at home and in the classroom, I think we can help people with, and determine if it's a mental health issue or just a way of things happening at home. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Sharon Van Leeuwen.
As I previously stated, that we need, we need to incorporate more programs that support well, the wellness of our children. And mental, we have some excellent counselors that we, that support our schools. Community resources, intervention programs, yes, and trauma-informed programs. But one of the things that we need to look at, if children come in to our schools with IEPs, the parent and the counselors and the need to work closely together so that we can identify early on those things that are needed so that we can build a better program or a better educational program for that child. So social programs promoting student well-being and making the community aware of the programs and, and intervention programs that we need.
Thank you. The question now goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. We need to start with strengthening universal supports such as social-emotional learning, mental health literacy, wellness practices, and professional development for our staff. Expanding targeted supports for at-risk groups with behavioral health screenings, check-in, checkouts with a caring, trusted adult, crisis intervention protocols, as well as small group counseling for grief, anxiety, or social skills. We can also create a culture of support, normalizing help-seeking, anonymous reporting apps, leadership modeling and openly discussing stress management, and celebrating wellness by hosting mental health awareness weeks or challenges. We need to normalize mental health. It needs to, we need to break that stigma and we need to normalize seeking help when you, when everything isn't okay.
Thank you. The question goes to Lori Petya Mackelsky.
Okay. So for me, I worked mental health for 45 years as a nurse and I always put my patient first. I would listen to them and allow them to talk. And I had very, very good relationships with my patients. Very few, I've never had a code green with my patients. And that had to do with because I was out there with them. I wasn't sitting in the nurses station. I feel the same thing for students. We, we need to listen to them and figure out what, number one, what would create them to come to school and have an outburst or something. I think some of the chaos and some of the things going on in the schools, the agendas that are being pushed are taking them away from their academic math, science, critical thinking, even music and all of that. We need to make sure they have what they need first. And a lot of the stuff that's causing confusion and chaos should be removed from the schoolroom.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Juan Huerta first. What is your position on the teaching of religion in public schools?
I think religion should be just left out of school. It should be for the Catholic schools if they want. Religion just should be out. Religion should just be out, politics should be out, government should be out. It should all be left at the local level. Everything should be decided by the community where the schools are at, South Washington County, because we know what our students need. Parents should be first, first aware of what's going on. For example, just recently, I just received an email for mental health screening for students. It says you can opt out, but if you miss the email and the date, then you can't opt out. I think that should have been more transparent and sent out ahead of time by mail and email, not just email. So just keep politics, religion, out of school, and government. This, it should just be all just parents and teachers to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Lori Peschia-McAlwski.
Thank you. So for me, I hate the word religion. I love the word rules, because I think, I think, number one, for our children to understand what rules are all about, they're there for a reason. And what it'll do is it'll make our children be successful in the future, to be able to listen and respect the teacher and what's going on. If a child is asked to write a paper on something important, and irregardless of their ethnic background, if they talk on Muslim, or if they talk on Christianity, or if they talk on their Indian background, they should be allowed to talk on that, and they should be given reinforcement that that is awesome. That's their history, that's who they are. So let's give everybody the right to do that, and not give somebody the right to do it and then take away from somebody else and say, we can't do that. And that has happened to my granddaughter. So I just feel like the rules and, and to have a good moral person coming out of the schools is what we should be striving for.
Thank you. The question goes to Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
Thank you. We are in a place where we have the separation of church and state, and these are public schools. So I don't believe that religion should be taught as a curriculum. I think, you know, if you're objectively teaching history, world history, and learning about cultures, that that's appropriate. But otherwise, really, that's what parochial in private schools, they serve that need for families that would like to seek out that religious training. The students, obviously, they're diverse, they're wonderful, there's a lot of different students in our schools who have various identities. And I think sharing their identities with each other and being fully present at school as they are is wonderful, but the schools are not here to teach religious principles.
Thank you. Question goes to Katie Schwartz.
I'm going to keep it very simple. I do not believe that religion should be taught in public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Question goes to Sharon Van Leer.
I also believe that religion should not be taught in school, because there is a separation of church and state for a reason. But I believe that conversation and sharing of cultures and of people with different ethnic backgrounds are acceptable. That's it.
Thank you. Question goes to Chad Borseth.
Echoing many of the same things that Elizabeth mentioned, the Supreme Court and our laws, you know, dictate what we can do in a school. And all principals and, and our superintendent are aware of things like the First Amendment and Establishment Clause. I mean, we can't not disallow a student to practice their religion in school, and we can't, you know, encourage them to, you know, practice their religion in class, you know. As an academic exercise, I believe learning about various religions is very important. I am definitely not, you know, a prohibition that we don't talk religion in school. We have several accommodations for various religious groups and holidays within our schools, and I'd like to see more of that, that we accommodate people's religion in school, that they can practice in a manner that's respectful to everybody. One note, I'm a strong supporter of school choice, and you're right, there are some religious schools in our area, there's some high-achieving charter schools in our area, and there's some very good private schools in our area as well. We should encourage that, that participation as school, as a school board, and collaborate with our partners in the community.
Thank you. The next question goes to Lori Peschia-McAlwski first. What is your number one priority as a school board member?
Okay, this is exciting for me, because what I would do on the school board is I would listen, I would get very involved with the board and find out everything I can about every policy on the book, because I think that is crucial, to find out what's going on in the classroom. Who makes these policies? Where do they come from? Are parents aware of the policies? I would promote parent participation in finding out the curriculum of their student, full transparency of what's going on during the year, and allow that parent to see all the policies. And at the school board, ask parents what they want. I want to be a voice for parents. I want to hear what they have to say, that I could bring that back to the school board. So a good collaboration, good teamwork on the school board is crucial.
Thank you. Question goes to Katie Schwartz.
My top priority has always been equity. It started when I first ran. I had a, well, I still have, a son with autism, and I have a daughter who was in the Gifted and Talented Program. And then I had, at the time, a child that was your middle-of-the-road, average learner. So I could see the difference in how they were being taught. And I wanted to make sure that equity was brought to them, that they were all getting their needs met. And that's still a priority for me. The priority has shifted somewhat. I feel that we are doing a great job with our special education, with our top learners, but I do feel that now we need to do more of that equity with our, as I stated before, with our cultures, and making sure that every student really does truly feel welcome and has someone that they can trust in the school, so that they want to come to school and they can learn. Thank you.
The question goes to Chad Borseth.
I have a long history of my hatred towards phones in school. I'm at Central High School in St. Paul. We went phone-free off and away all day. Some of the most complex learners, we can do it. We're not doing it in South Washington now. We have to take the enforcement of phones away from the building level and bring it to our district level with, with strong phone policy. This, this ban will happen. Are we going to lead, or are we going to follow? The data is overwhelming. Students are disengaged and unmotivated to participate in these activities. I've seen it, in three weeks, our students are adjusting. They are much more malleable. In fact, I think we have more trouble with some parents and their phone use. Students will adjust. So my priority, yes, we take these phones out of school, off and away all day, bell to bell.
Thank you. The question now goes to Juan Huerta.
Thank you. My first priority would be, just like Lori said, review the policies for the school boards, see what policies are actually benefiting the students, which ones are not. Same with what Chad said. Number one thing, if you take the phones out of the school, there'll be more direct contact with the teachers and communication. Phones are a big distraction. You got cyberbullying. You got a, you could have a middle school grader in school, all of a sudden they see on Snapchat, TikTok, whatever, hey, there's going to be a fight where you don't like you, we're going to pick on you. So now everyone's texting back and forth, Snapchatting. No one's concentrating, listening to the teachers. That student that's getting picked on now is being cyberbullying and no longer concentrating. That's where the counseling comes in to help them. And then look at where all the funding is actually going. We got directed to where it really needs to be, like academics and helping the pair of teachers where they need a lot more help. They probably need more teachers, to tell you the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. The question goes Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
Thank you. I would focus really on the achievement gap, which is closely tied with equity, as well as teacher workload. And so I guess my main focus would be to think about that achievement gap is not getting a lot smaller and not quickly. So I think keeping our eyes on this is really important. I think it's really important that we do the equity work, we help students feel like they belong, and we meet their base needs so that they can experience academic success. We can even look to some of the students in the district for creative and innovative solutions. There are students at East Ridge who started a study group called Students Work to Close the Gap. As far as related to the achievement gap related to teacher workload, the early intervention really matters with helping students learn and set up a track for success. And so potentially putting more resources into our youngest classrooms to ensure that those students are seen and their needs are met and that they're meeting growth targets. I also just want to mention that the testing metrics that are used by the state are not always the most accurate anymore. A lot of parents opt out, a lot of students don't take them seriously.
Thank you. Question goes to Sharon Van Leer.
Will you repeat the question for me?
What is your number one priority as a school board member?
Okay. My top priority is a little bit different than everyone else's. It is engaging teachers and families in the decision-making process. I think it would cut down on some of the disconnect that we have, and by encouraging teachers and parents to participate with the understanding that they, that we will use open, flexible communication and create a diverse platform using committees and surveys to gather suggestions and feedback. That would, and that we value and ensure that our parents' contribution and teachers are recognized. And through this collaboration and inclusion, we would build trust by acknowledging and recognizing their participation.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Chad Borseth first. What do you think are the most important components of the strategic plan?
I am unfamiliar with the strategic plan. I'm currently a doctoral student, and I'm quite busy as a special ed teacher in St. Paul. My time is limited. As a father, I'm also limited. So I'm not aware of a lot of the points of the strategic plan. I would hope that we don't overcomplicate things. Again, I'm going to say it, one in four of our students in this district are chronically absent, they miss more than 10% of their classes. Okay? This is a five-alarm fire that's been going on for way too many years. This, the trend started before, the disengagement started before COVID. I don't want to hear about it. So strategic plans are great, but I'm more for practical solutions. When we address chronic absenteeism, we don't need to have strategic plans.
Thank you. Question goes to Sharon Van Leer.
Our strategic plan focuses on student experiences and the mastery of learning using personalized culturally-affirming education. Our core values are connection, integrity, equity, excellence, and innovation. Student experience and mastery of learning is one of the top priorities. Culturally-affirming spaces help students create an environment where they feel valued, welcomed. And community engagement, as I spoke before, is also a part of our strategic plan.
Thank you. Question goes to Lori Peschia-McAlwski.
Okay. I'm not real familiar with the strategic plan, but I definitely, it sounds like a great idea. I think strategic planning begins before a child even begins school. I believe it is parents getting a full idea of what the, what is going to be taught during the school year. If a parent sees things that aren't right, that parent can ask questions. Also, for a child to learn, we want the children to get excited. Why are they going to come if they sit in a room of chaos? So to be able to get that room back in order, where a teacher can teach, that there'll be a good disciplinary action plan in place, where if a child is acting out, the teacher can go right back into teaching. And promoting things, the critical thinking, getting kids talking, getting kids excited about what's going on in the classroom, I think a lot of that begins there. So the strategy is just getting them to school, getting them excited, and, and, and parents and teachers working with, helping them get a plan that works for writing down homework and things like that.
Thank you. Question now goes to Juan Huerta.
I'm also not familiar too much with the strategic plan, but I think, starting at the lowest grades, second, third, and fourth grade, teaching everybody the basics, math, reading, science, and in order to have a good strategic plan, I think you need to get the teachers and parents involved. We should open up, as a school board members, we should open up, let, allow, let parents back into the school board and ask questions, say, what are we planning? What, what, what are you guys doing for this? What are you guys doing for that? If you have the parents come to the school board meetings, then you have like current topics and current issues that they're concerned of, and then you can address them and actually let's, let's like brainstorm and see what we can do better to help the teachers and the students and parents. We just got to collaborate all together as one.
Thank you. Question goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. The strategic plan, the parts that I find the best, I was on the committee when we did this, so obviously I do like it. We have connections, the equity, and the educational innovation. The connections and the equity and the educational innovations really talk about that student experience. And that's where those connections come in. I've talked about it a lot, having that connection to a trusted adult. I've talked about equity quite a bit. And then the educational innovation is getting the students excited to learn. And when this strategic plan did come forward, we did a lot of the things that some of the others have talked about. We did have the teachers and the parents involved. We have our advisory committees, and all of those committees were involved in the making of this strategic plan. All of the information is available on the district website, so everybody would have had a great opportunity to read up on all of this strategic plan to help with their students' learning.
Thank you. Question goes to Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
I appreciate the key principles of equity and connection in the district strategic plan. I think they do have a nice balance of five, five key principles, connections, integrity, equity, excellence, and educational innovation. But I think, you know, starting with the connection matters first, so that the students feel like they belong in the building, as well as equity, those are really critical. That helps affirm their identities. And then you can get some really creative ways of trying to reach all students and kind of, that's promoted through the educational innovation. So I think if we can realize the strategic plan, that would be really great.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes first to Lori Peschia-McAlwski. How will you engage teachers and families in the decision-making process?
I would say, because a parent is the one that should be in, in the middle of what their child is learning, I think that I would encourage parents to even join parent groups, to be going to these board meetings, to be asking questions, to be able to, you know, steer their child's education. It's not up to a child to determine that they need science, technology, math, reading, writing. It's up to the parent. And for a parent and teacher to work together is, is very important. I know things like, like robotics and things they have, there's so many fun things kids can learn, and I really want to see parents and the teachers work together with that child, get that child to be successful in their future, irregardless of what they're going to be doing, something that will get them excited about their, their future.
Thank you. Question goes to Chad Borseth.
I, I think it starts with being accessible to, you know, parents. I think teacher voice as well, represented through their, their union representation. I'm concerned that, that the families and the students' voices are underheard. So increasing, however, we can get honest conversations with parents. I think someone pointed out, you know, parents in school, parents on PT, on parent groups, I think these are important first steps. The mentorship is very important to me for understanding students. I'd like to see our district put policies in place where teachers are encouraged to participate or to mentor students. And I'm not talking a lot of time, I'm talking daily contacts, how are you, where are you, what do you need? Like a guidance counselor in this district is probably responsible for three, 400 students. We have a lot of teachers that want to do more. And so to get the student voice, I think I would rely on, on our teachers to capture their voice more through the mentorship program. Families, I kept my website open. I've been keeping it going since I, my last election, and I respond to people.
Thank you. Question goes to Juan Huerta.
Just like I said before, open up the school board meetings to families, for all parents to come in, better communication, as like I said before, with teachers and parents, as an example. I had a child in middle school that was having issues with making it to class on time. He had getting tardiness and never got a call from a teacher or the principal, just kept getting tardy, tardy, tardy. I said, hey, what's going on? He goes, I'm at one end of the school, need to get to the other end. So I asked the principal and the teacher if I can go in and discuss what's going on. They said, yeah, here's what's going on. I go, less than, you got like a minute and some seconds to go from one end of the school to the other. We actually worked together. We went from this pool area all the way to the English area, to the opposite side of the school, walked it, and it actually took us the full minute and a half to make to school. And I to the classroom, and I said, now, how would it be with the full hallway, you know? And if they would just communicate with us in the first place, everything would have been done fine, nothing, no issues, no tardiness. After that, walked through with the teacher and the principal, everything was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Question goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. I believe I already do a good job of engaging parents and teachers. The district does a good job of that. We have our board meetings that are open to members of the public. One meeting a month, we do have comments to the board. We recently decided that those comments to the board will also now be re- that those comments to the board will also now be recorded. So if you are watching from home, you can see those as well. All of our, any board member, your email address is listed on the district website. We do have a variety of different committees, advisories, that a board member is on every single, there's at least one, most likely two, board members on every single one of the advisory committees that we have. So board members are there. We have, I'm trying to think of other ways of communication. Sometimes we're able to attend PTA meetings so that we are open and accessible to the public.
Thank you. Question goes to Sharon Van Leer.
As I had stated previously, that was one of my top priorities, but being collaborative and respectful, maybe that's the word I want to use, that dialogue and communications between teachers and parents is first to seek understanding, value their concerns, respect the opinions of others, and provide the opportunity and the time to acknowledge and seek input and feedback. It's a two-way street. And as Katie said, we do have comments to the board from our community. I know a number of us have constituents in the community, and they have no problem contacting us and and expressing their concerns. And I value their those concerns and challenges. And I I believe I understand their their needs.
Thank you. The question now goes to Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
Thank you. I the priority I would put forth is to just be present, to attend and be in school and community events and be accessible to families. Currently, school board meetings are open, and the community can participate by attending and or signing up for open comment sections. I was at recent board meetings, and very few people attend, and very few people are watching online. And so that's just one thing to kind of keep in mind, they're open, but not a lot of people are accessing them. School board meetings are one way, but there are also advisory committees, PTAs. You can partner with your child's school. You can partner with maybe secondary groups in the district, secondary student groups to learn more about their perspective. I really think that the district does well when they highlight storytelling, student stories, teacher stories, administrator's stories, staff stories, and maybe finding a TLDR, Too Long Didn't Read version of board meetings and and getting active on social media and kind of some innovative ways to reach community groups would be welcome.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Juan Huerta first. What do you think are the biggest areas of strength in our schools, and where are the opportunities for improvement?
Think the biggest strengths are sports, brings a lot of students together regardless of race and background. And then we just got to like 53% to 54% of math and science are down. I think that's getting stronger. We can still improve on that if we focus more on those academics. Same with science. Science is at 42%. That should be improved. I think we go back to the basics. One thing is with math, we got these new math ideas coming out where the parents now don't even know how to do the basic algebra or basic division because it's long. It's all these new types of mathematics. They want you to help your student, but we don't even know how to do that. We should go back to some basic math, how to do basic division, timetables, all that. That'll help us working with our children at home. Even some of my older students or children are like, that's different than what we did last year. So something, it's just confusing kids. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Lori Pesci-McKelski.
Okay. So I would say strengths in the schools and improvement. So strengths would be some of the things that I observe, like the robotic program in engineering is wonderful. My grandson is in that in East Ridge. There are some very good things going on. However, improvement can be, if parents are not going to the board meetings, there is an issue with them knowing that they're even going on. Two years ago, I did everything I could to get into one of these meetings, and I I went in circles, and I got nowhere. I wasn't hearing what I wanted to hear. I wanted to be invited. I think parents should be told about these parent meetings, District 833, Parent United, et cetera. Parents need to be invited to come to these board meetings. I think a lot of times they just think, well, I have no access. They have full access, and it and teachers and parents need need to encourage that.
Thank you. The question goes to Sharon Van Leer.
I think one of our strong points, strengths are the improvement in our buildings to make them safe, and the other is our financial portfolio and our our programs. One of the disconnects is between the parents and the administration communications. And we do invite parents and community, other community members to attend. I think that what happens is, is when there's a crisis, everybody attends. So I think we need to get serious about some of the things that they're concerned about and bring them to the board.
Thank you. The question goes to Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
I think someone was really ambitious to give us one minute to talk about the biggest areas of strength and opportunities for the district, but I'll give it a go. I think one of the biggest areas of strength is expert teachers who know our students. Any of you who have students in the district know that they are welcome when they walk into those buildings. They love going to school. They love their teachers and the staff in the buildings, and that's a huge strength and an asset. The programming that the district offers and has offered for years, from tiered special education services to Avid and ECFE, ECSE, Alternative High School, all the way to IBAP, Project Lead the Way, it's amazing. The students have a lot of opportunities here. The opportunities to work on stuff, I think, you know, the achievement gap continues to be something, but I've mentioned that before. I think teacher workload and teacher retention are a huge thing to focus on, to continue to keep an eye on that so that they can continue to know each and every student, and every student feel valued when they walk in the door, and to know what the students need to be academically, socially, and emotionally successful.
Thank you. Question goes to Chad Borseth.
Our number one attribute that we have going is we have a committed community that supports us financially when we need it. And that was demonstrated in our last election or with the bond and levy bills. It enables us to attract high-quality teachers. Teachers are responsive to salary. Some of I've worked with some of the finest history, science, and math teachers. One math teacher, I'm currently using their curriculum in Central High right now in my class. But I think our special education department from the top down is 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 excellent. We don't, at Central, we quite don't have the same budget as we do here, but this district does very well. I would very much recommend this the special ed program for any students that need to come to our community schools.
Thank you. The question now goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. I believe that one of our biggest strengths is our staff, all of our staff, not just our teachers, our paras, our bus drivers, our bus mechanics. Our bus mechanics have earned statewide awards year after year for the way they keep our buses in top shape. And let's be honest, if our kids can't get to school, they can't learn. So and our nutritional service staff are feeding all the kids that they feed every single day. And, you know, we know that kids that are hungry can't learn. So getting, keeping those kids fed. So having that staff to do the work is really our biggest strength, and that helps with our strategic plan, with that educational innovation. One of our improvements, it's always going to be an improvement, is that budget. We get money from the state, and we rely on the state. We rely on the number of kids that come in, and those are things that we can't really change. And so we have to be very careful with that budget.
Thank you. We'll move on to our last question, and it will go first to Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg. Have you been endorsed by or received any letters of support by political parties or affiliated groups, for example, Take Action or Action for Liberty, or sought an endorsement or letter of support? Why or why not?
Thank you. I have not sought endorsement from political groups. I am supported by the teacher union, and I have a gun sense endorsement from Moms Demand Action. And the reason I sought out that endorsement is because I've participated in Moms Demand Action for a few years and support the idea that we make our communities safer by supporting different gun legislation.
Thank you. The question goes to Sharon Van Leer.
No, I have not been endorsed by any political organization. I have been endorsed by the United Teachers Union. What was the other part of the question?
Or have you sought an endorsement letter of support?
No, I have not support any letters of support. I believe that I running on my own merit. I have been a member of this community for over 40 years, and I think that what I do and what I stand for gives me the whatever I need to be supported.
Thank you. Question goes to Lori Pesci-McKelski.
Okay. So for me, my children went to Royal Oaks many years ago. They're now successful adults with their own jobs and their own families. So for me, I would say, when I was asked to run, I wanted to because I was listening to grandchildren. I was listening to people talking about how frustrated they were with what was going on with anxiety levels, with children, confusion, et cetera, in the public schools. So when I was asked to run, I immediately did that. And I'm excited because I hooked up with, I had questions for District 833, Parents United. I am I'm asking neighbors and other people to come alongside and tell about their concerns, what their children are dealing with in the public schools. And I'm getting a very clear picture of what is really needed. And it is academic first. And it's the things that are deterrents that are throwing them off track. It's political issues that are throwing them off track. And I want to get academics for each child at no matter what ethnic race they are.
And the next person it goes to is Chad, but I'm going to read the question again.
Thank you.
Have you been endorsed by or received any letters of support by political parties or affiliated groups, or sought an endorsement or letter of support? Why or why not?
Unlike 2023, which I didn't do any endorsement, this time around, I did entertain some endorsements. Some I declined, and some they declined to me. To claim that our school boards are nonpartisan in today's reality is a farce.
It is.
Over $60,000 was kicked into our last election. This special interest spending contributes to the composition of our school board. The teachers' union, I study them to an esoteric level. They are, when you employ 29 lobbyists, and your headquarters is about 500 feet from the state capitol, it's a political organization. Politics are very important. I don't want politics on our school board, either side. And that's why my $3,000 last election got me about 2,700 votes and not 9,000 that I needed to win. Thank you.
Thank you. Question goes to Katie Schwartz.
Thank you. I have not been endorsed by any political group, nor have I sought out any letters of support. I did decline a letter of support because I do believe that this is a nonpartisan race, and it should be remain a nonpartisan race. I know some people this evening have spoke about keeping politics out of out of the schools and out of the school board. I know some candidates have been endorsed by political parties, and I feel that that is messing with the integrity of the of the position because it is a nonpartisan position, and politics do need to stay out of the schools.
Thank you. Question now goes to Juan Huerta.
I know I've not gotten a letter for or been endorsed by any political party. I have been supported or supported by Parents United. I was approached by one of the individuals going knocking door to door. We discussed stuff, and he asked me if I was willing to run. I said yes, mostly to give a voice to parents and work closely with teachers. When I first started running, I didn't even know that the board had a salary. I did it voluntarily. I think if you really, really want to support the children and the community, this whole board, whatever salary we do get, should just go redirect it back into the school system. We can do this for free, just volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now turn to our closing statements, which we will do in reverse alphabetical order. Each candidate will have one minute for their closing statement to summarize their qualifications and positions. And I ask that each candidate also provides their website or social media information so voters can learn more about them and their positions. So we will begin with Sharon Van Leer.
Okay. Well, as I have stated before, as a parent, grandparent, great-grandparent, aunt, and foster parent, I have seen how dedicated and committed our teachers are, and I support them 100%. I have had great conversation with our community members, and I believe I understand their challenges and concerns. My experience is relevant. I've been at Mitchell-Hamlin School of Law for almost 40 years, and I am committed to working with all of the stakeholders. If elected, I will champion initiatives that support our educators. I will continue to support the resources, our support our physical accountability. I will also support programs and resources that provide opportunities for all children to succeed. I believe, I want to leave you with something that I heard.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Okay.
And we move on to Katie Schwartz with her closing statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and giving all candidates the opportunity to express their thoughts and views on the district. My message is simple. I believe that every student, no matter where, who they are or where they come from, deserves to feel safe, welcomed, and valued in our schools. Our classrooms should be a place where diversity is celebrated, and every child can reach their full potential. I have been honored to have served on the board since 2014, and I would be honored to have your vote in November. Please do your research, see which candidates align with the values that you want to remain in South Washington County schools. If you want more information about me, you can visit my website at katieforfor833.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with her closing statement, Lori Pesci-McKelski.
Okay. So I, having four children of my own, I was a single parent. I had many opportunities to volunteer in the schools, and I made sure I was in the classroom when they went to Royal Oaks, very active in the community in different ministries that I do also. But I when I I am anticipating being on the school board, and I want your vote because I am excited for academic excellence. What does that look like? It looks like kids being excited about things. I mean, let's get the kids' things on the walls of the schools, the science projects, the achievements. Let's give it back there. And let's start it with the parents to be 100% involved with what's going on. And so that's where I'm I'm at. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Now with this closing statement, Juan Huerta.
Thank you. I'm asking for your vote November 4. I'm a common sense person, want to bring back higher education for reading, math, writing, and science. I had five children. So far, attended to the entire school district, 833. Like I said, two graduated from East Ridge, two from Park, three from Park, actually, and then one still in College Road Middle School. And like I said, I thought this was volunteer. I would completely just that I think the whole school board should just give up the salary that they're getting if they whatever it is, and just give it back to the schools. And my website is juanhuerta4southwashington.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with her closing statement, Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and the Telecommunication Service and the viewers for the opportunity to share my platform. Thank you all for being engaged with local school board level politics. Strong schools mean strong communities, and your vote and your attention, they matter. My key takeaways, I want to focus on students receiving the resources they need to reach their full potential. I want to work on supporting and retaining teachers while being good fiscal stewards of public dollars. I care deeply about Southwestco students and their outcomes. I'm an educator with a ready grasp of the issues. I will work collaboratively with stakeholders. grasp of the issues. I will work collaboratively with stakeholders. I'm curious, I'm ready to learn, and analytical. I'm not one to make decisions without evidence and input, because the details matter, and I do my homework. I'm teacher-endorsed. I've attended the recent board meetings, met with the superintendent and the teacher union leadership. I'm engaged with this work, and I'm ready to dig in and serve the community in this capacity. Our community is stronger when our students, teachers, and schools are supported, and I'm Elizabeth Bachmann-Eckberg. I'm here to do just that. If you want to learn more about me, please go to BachmanForSchoolBoard.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Now with this closing statement is Chad Borseth.
My goal in this campaign is to try to tell a story of public education based on my experiences over the last eight years through my master's program, my doctoral program, and my experience in two incredibly different schools. As I mentioned in the last election, over sixty thousand dollars was spent by special interest groups on candidates that are on the board. And that raises a simple question. Why are these special interest groups so interested in our school boards that they're spending sixty thousand dollars? I believe our schools should be about student interests. I also am proposing, when I'm on the school board, that we move our school boards to on-cycle elections, so we can increase participation, reduce the influence of special interests in our school boards. What that means is that we'll hold our next school board on-cycle, even years only. Participation is good. Our schools need participation.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for District Eight Thirty-Three. You have heard tonight six of the nine candidates who are running, and there will be four positions open. Thank you, and remember to vote. Early voting is September nineteenth to November third, and election day is November fourth. Thank you.